Good evening, everybody. I call to order this regular meeting of the Tiger Twalton School District Board of Directors. Starting with our agenda. Mr. Superintendent, do we have any changes to the agenda tonight?
We have no changes to the agenda.
Would any of my fellow board members suggest a change to the agenda? Hearing none? I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second. Ooh, she beat you out. Moved by Vice Chair Irvin, seconded by Director Miles, that we approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We move on to the best part of the day, the recognition and good news. And that is? HR Director Len Reed. Welcome to the dais. Or podium, or, no, dais. All right, well, good evening, everyone. I have the wonderful opportunity to welcome and congratulate some new faces to roles here in TTSD. And the first one that I'm going to start off with is Daisy Leone, who is our Talent Acquisition and Retention Manager. So this is Daisy here on my right. Daisy, you can just wave. All right. So Daisy started with us in HR. So she's part of the HR team on August 11th. We ended up taking her away from Trimate, where she was a talent acquisition specialist. She has about eight years in experience in terms of talent acquisition. And so we're excited for the skills and the knowledge that she's going to bring to her role in TTSD. Daisy says that one of the things that attracted her to this role is that she has always worked with early-career students, even in her role in Trimate. So offering mentorship and support, which she is able to continue and do through our diverse educator pathway programs. So this was something that really, you know, resonated with her in terms of the work that she has been doing. In addition, she will lead our recruitment and retention efforts as a district, promoting our brand and facilitating supports that we have across the districts, such as colleagues of color and our new educator-mentor program. And a fun fact about Daisy is if she wasn't in HR, she would be a professional athlete and would play soccer. Both her and her husband currently play recreational soccer. And she considers herself a pretty competitive person. So we'll help us welcome Daisy Leone to TTSD. All right. And to the right of Daisy, we are congratulating Emily Anderson as the new principal at Hazelbrook Middle School. So Emily joined TTSD last year as the AP at Hazelbrook Middle School, in which her former principal Harvey Foltz and AP Jeff Grisby were an entirely new team who made a tremendous impact in the climate and culture of the school. Emily came from Sherwood, where she served as an associate principal for many years. One of the things that really came through for her in the interview process was her passion for the Hazelbrook community and the desire to continue the amazing work that they are doing. That really shone through. And even her love for middle-level learners was evident. As you know, oftentimes, people, when you tell them, hey, you're a middle, you're a middle-school teacher, you work with middle-level students, that gives you the, ah! I just love that she grew to love middle learners. And it's now her jam. So she's now my people, because as you know, middle school's my jam. So love that she grew to love middle-school learners. And so, fun fact, we've got a competitive group here. She played basketball in college. And so, overall, we look forward to her continual impact and leadership in the TTSD community. So help us in congratulating Emily Anderson. All right, so I'll turn it over to the board for any questions, thoughts, comments. Well, welcome to you both. And Emily, I'm super excited. I talked to quite a number of staff members at Hazelbrook last year, and they 201 told me how wonderful your team last year was at pulling together. And so I know that the faculty at Hazelbrook is going to be thrilled that you're the new leader there. So, welcome, everybody.
Thank you.
Okay, we now have our first report and discussion item, which is our annual budget hearing. And so I will call to order this budget hearing. Do we have any public comment for our budget? We do not. Well, in that case, I will now close our budget hearing meeting. And we'll move to our student representative reports. So, welcome to our student representatives. It's still early, the school year hasn't actually started, so there's not going to be a whole lot of school stuff to talk about. But let's see what you got to say anyway. And I'm not going to embarrass any one of you by calling on you, so I'll let you figure out who wants to speak first.
Hello? Hi. We are so close to getting the school year started again. This week, for Performing Arts, our thesbian troop is hosting a freshman camp. It started today, and it will be going on through the 27th. It's from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. in the auditorium. And our incoming freshmen can sign up on the Tiger Theater Instagram. Tomorrow, we also have our Ready-Sit-Raw, which is kind of like our back-to-school day. Their first shift will be from 9:00 to 12:00, and then from 4:00 to 8:00. We have Start Smart, Smart Start, starting from 8:00 to 9:00. And then we have back-to-school night that same day, from 5:00 to 8:00, where students can meet their teachers. We will also have Club Rush happening, as well as students can purchase, like, the yearbook, the ESB stickers, parking passes, so on, so forth. And then their picture day will also be taking place that day. Next week, on the 2nd, we have freshman orientation. So all of our lead crew leaders will be coming in and showing the freshmen the way of high school life. Also, that morning at 6:00, we have our senior sunrise on the Tiger High football field.
For sports for this week, we have some jamborees on Thursday for football and volleyball, and also for girls' soccer. And varsity and JV for girls' soccer play at Silverton. And varsity volleyball is at home. And football is also at home, starting at 5:00. And then for boys and girls varsity soccer, we have some endowment games at home at 5:00, and girls are at 7:00. And all fall sports have their first games in need of the season next week.
Fall sports at Twalton are starting up here shortly, I believe. Football has a game, I think, around the same time you do. And then the new theater director has already started auditions for the Shrek play coming up. And that will be, I believe, September 2nd after school. So around 3:35.
Thank you so much. Do we have any questions for our student reps? Well, thank you all? Oh, yeah.
I know that last year, we kind of talked about, like, why we decided to, like, join as a student rep. Should we also say that as well? Or?
Sure. I didn't want to, I put you on the spot, but I know we would all love to hear it.
I wanted to be a student rep, because I am really interested in kind of just like the local politics of Tiger High School. And I'm wanting to just be more involved in my school and let people know how students feel about the environment at their schools and just make it a more positive experience for everyone.
This is Q2 from me. I really enjoy the environment here with the board and the cabinet. I'm also, like, really interested in local politics. I remember, like, these previous couple of years, I've said that, like, these past upperclassmen have always inspired me to create this kind of change and advocate on behalf of students. So that's why I'm here for my second year.
I became a student rep to help give students the best possible experience they can have at the school by giving them a voice, or improving their voice.
That sounds like such a little thing, but that's a really big job. So, thank you for taking that on. Okay. Well, then, we are just whipping through this agenda tonight. We'll move now to superintendent and board communication.
Thank you very much, and welcome again to our new student representatives. We're always eager to hear your perspective and glad that you're joining us for the rest of the year. So, thank you for being here. Also want to say, welcome back to our licensed staff and our 10-month staff. Today is Monday, which is the first day that they report back. And I was able to drop into a couple of buildings today and saw a lot of people getting their rooms ready. And I know that there is many staff getting their rooms and spaces ready on their own time before even the first day. So I know we're all really eager to have students back. Our official welcome back, though, is this Wednesday at Twalton High School at 8:30. It'll be great. We're changing things up a little bit, in that instead of it being primarily Hibbert Staff ran, it's going to be emceed by Jordan Mills and Matt Coleman, so principal at Bridgeport in Byram. And then we have a great guest speaker, Twalton High School's own Reggie Stegmaier. So we're looking forward to an event where we get to have our building leaders and familiar faces in buildings be the face of the event, which I think will be a nice little change-up. And of course, we're going to end with the relay. And don't worry for those who are listening, I know there's questions about, are we going to know what the rules are? And yes, we'll be organized, we will know, we'll be very clear on what the rules are, and we will have judges. So it should be fun. For the last couple of weeks, we really have been focusing on getting students back. And I think the last time we had a board meeting, I shared about some of the things that we did as a, department-wise, especially as a cabinet. But one thing that I think is really critical is our partnerships that we have in the community. One event that I wanted to point out, and if you could show it, Thor, is shout-out to Packed with Pride and to Lamb Research. This is a group of volunteers and FPAs. So FPAs and then Packed with Pride volunteers. And they handed out over 700 backpacks last Thursday. There was several community members who benefited from getting a backpack and supplies for the kids. And we know with the way that the economy is these days, every little thing helps. But more importantly, it's symbolic of our community's commitment to families and to our students. So it was nice to be able to be a part of that. I got a great opportunity to greet some families and welcome them and have some conversations. So it was nice to be a part of, and I'm really thankful for our partnership. Also, we're keeping a close eye on enrollment. I know Director Len Reed will give you a report on our enrollment. But things are looking pretty steady. I was worried it was going to be a little bit low. We're looking at about 10,800 and some change. And we'll keep an eye on that. And the thing that we're also keeping an eye on is what that means for our classroom. So as we start seeing kids come in, we'll be keeping an eye on and making sure that we are talking with principals as classrooms start filling out. So putting that out there as well. All right, and then we're actually, I have pretty short comments today. I have one more thing. We want to, I want to spend a lot of my time showing a video that we worked on. So this year, in our district, we're really focusing on telling the story of our school district. So over the course of the year, you'll see a series of videos that showcase all the wonderful work that's happening in TTSD, in the classroom and beyond, at all levels. And here's the first video. It's about recent Twalton High School graduates sharing their experience as English-language learners and newcomers in our system. And I think what's really important is this video show, it's very compelling and shows the triumphs of our students. And it's important, because we're really trying to align our focus on elevating access and achievement, especially for our multilingual learners. And this video really helps to tell their story.
My name is Sitlalik Perez Segundino. I'm born here in Portland, Oregon. But when I was a baby, 3 months old, my parents decided to come back to Mexico.
I'm Yelena Sotelo Hernandez. Nací en Oregon, pero cuando tenía dos años, me fui vivir a México con mis padres.
We're going to share with a person from the other side of the classroom.
Desde que tengo memoria, sabía que tenía que venir a Estados Unidos para estudiar y hacer mi vida aquí por las mejores oportunidades.
Quería aprender inglés y quería saber cómo se estudiaba en una escuela americana.
Todos dicen que hay mejores oportunidades y mejor vida aquí, a pesar de estar tan lejos de tu familia. Eso fue lo más doloroso del principio. El decidir dejar atrás toda mi vida. IUDI ha sido un suporte para mí, para poder hacer mi vida aquí.
IUDI is a program where they teach a new student of other countries to improve, like, writing, listening. I learn, like, new words, like, how I can, like, communicate with each other.
The teachers are so kind, and they are big support for all of their students. It's a class where you can be yourself, and you're not going to be judged.
Yo conocí a Sitlalit aquí en Twalton High School. Antes no teníamos como muchos amigos, solamente éramos nosotras dos.
Ella fue como esa hermana que nunca tuve. Crescimos en el mismo lugar, vivimos casi lo mismo. Nuestra experiencia al venir acá, cuando llegamos, todo fue casi igual, y eso lo hace como una conexión mutua.
It's like el destino. Twalton High School me ha ayudado mucho a crecer como persona. He conocido varias personas que me han ayudado, me han apoyado, y siempre me dicen, oh, tú puedes, tú eres valiente. Yo voy a ser la primera persona de mi familia que va a ir a la universidad.
To me, graduating means the end of an important chapter, but it's the beginning of the new things, of my new life. If I could say something to my younger self, it would be like, don't be afraid, you can do it.
So beautiful video, and that's it for my report.
Well, which board member wants to give their report after that? That's a hard act to follow. That's a great video, by the way. Okay. Nothing from that side of the room we get. Got a mom who just dropped her kid off at college. She's...
I should have been prepared for a crying video when I've been crying constantly after dropping my daughter off at college. But it's fine. We're fine, everything's fine. That was beautiful.
Director Weston, do you have any board communication to share tonight?
No, I'm just looking forward to the start of the school year and a successful year for the district. Thank you.
Thank you for the video. Are we going to get to see more like that throughout the year?
You will, we already have another one in the queue.
Oh, okay.
It's at the elementary school.
Oh, that's great. Can't wait to see more. Very excited for the new year, and welcome to our student reps. Really looking forward to engaging with you over the course of the year. Welcome back, moms. Nice to see you. Your voices are really important to what we do. It's great to just look over and see you sitting there and knowing that the work that we do is informed by you and that you represent the voices of the students in the district. We know that decisions that a board makes impact students the next day. And so it's really important to have you here, and thank you for your service, thank you for your work, and thank you for your interest in being a part of what we do. So, welcome.
I absolutely echo everything she just said. And I also wanted to say to my fellow board members, thank you for your hard work at our board retreat last week. We had a really good retreat. We worked through a lot of stuff. Somehow, no matter how long we make the retreat, it's never long enough to do everything that we need. I, we could make it 12 hours, it still wouldn't be long enough. But anyway, but we got good stuff done, so thank you. And I too, I'm really looking forward to the school year ahead. I think I've got, I've got all the right feels for this year. It's feeling like a good year. And so with that, we'll move to the public comment part of the evening. Do we have any? We have no public comment for tonight. So again, whizzing through the agenda, we'll go to our first reports and discussion item, and that is our enrollment update, as queued up by our superintendent earlier. And that's HR Director Len Reed. Come on down. Well, good evening once again. Today, I'm talking a little bit about enrollment and where we are today. So when I completed the board report, we only had the update for August 15th, and to date, we have one for August 22nd. So I'll speak a little bit more to that one than what I had for 8/15. All right, so if you take a look at the 8/22 tab for enrollment, you will see that, you know, we are down a little bit in terms of 327 students versus the time at this point, last year, we were negative 141. So, but we are seeing an increase, you know, as we go on, week by week. We are constantly monitoring hotspots for the elementary classrooms and have added either additional FTE or support in educational IAs to the classrooms that may be a little bit on the border or the larger side in terms of class size. I know that I put in the enrollment, just gave you the guide in terms of target class size and the range, so you can take a look at, you know, where most of the classrooms are landing in terms of range. And we're pretty much within all of the ranges across the district for elementary. As far as a secondary, Fowler and Hazelbrook are up compared to last year at this time. But Twalton is a bit down. But overall, when you look at the numbers between last year and this year, we're holding steady to where we were at this point. Same thing with high school. Tiger High School numbers are down compared to where they are historically. However, but Tiger, I'm sorry, Twalton High School, sorry. Twalton High School, TTVA, and Creekside are all either up or maintaining steady. So those are pretty much there. So are there any questions in terms of enrollment today?
And if we need to get these things later, it's fine. Is Mitch at its capacity? Do we know they're at 220?
I would have to look that up for you.
Is there an expected, like, bump after the first week? Like, how does that normally go, like, once school starts?
So, good question. And why we hold steady on some of these is that we wait for the 10-day drop. And then, so we really want to wait until the first 10 days of school have passed. And then we do the 10-day drop. So those that have not attended school in those first 10 days end up being dropped. And then we have a little bit more accurate a shakeout where we truly are as a district.
And then one more. At some point, and I don't know, maybe it's not on this one, at some point during the year, we get some numbers about what percentage of our students go to external charter schools. Like, if we hit that 3%, it may not be in this report. Do you know what report that's on?
No, but I believe we report on that separately, Dr. McCall's, the transfers. I can get that information and do a report out.
Okay, yeah, whatever that comes on at some point in the year.
For sure.
Thank you.
So, kind of, when we've, year over year, been looking at the demographer reports and all the things, I just, for several years, there was sort of the shift because people were leaving. And kind of nationwide, right? And I just, I kind of want to call out, because what I think we're heading into now is what we know, we're smaller, like, we have these big classes leaving and smaller because of birth rates and all the things coming in. So when we're seeing these little drops sometimes, it's different than the post-pandemic, like, sort of, drops when people were leaving and not coming back. And these are really sort of settling into this, we just are having smaller kinder classes. Is that mostly true?
Yes.
Thank you.
And if you look at the numbers of students, we still have a pretty significant bubble of students that I think are in fourth, fifth, sixth this year. And we'll see them moving through the system. But if you look at our K1, 2 numbers, they are quite a bit lower than they have been in the past. I am actually kind of pleased to hear that Fowler and Hazelbrook were up, and Twalton was down. Because if it were the other way around, then Twalton would be bursting at the seams, and that would be unfortunate. So at least our biggest school is the one that's, so we don't have to worry about capacity as much. So that's a good sign.
One thing that we'll be keeping a close eye on as well is, as you, as I drove to Art Ruckin over the last couple of weeks for in-services, we're starting to see the completion of some of those housing developments. And we're kind of waiting to see who moves into those homes, to see if that will impact our enrollment as well. But I think the trend that we're seeing is, again, correct me if I'm wrong here, Director Reed, it kind of flattened out. And it looks like we might be coming up just a little bit, you know? We won't be at the same numbers that we were back in 2016 or 2018. We've definitely flattened out a little bit. And it's nice to see that balance between the middle schools as well.
Yeah, absolutely. All right, any other questions, thoughts? Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll now move on to the first read of our board working agreements. And you should see the document reworked after our retreat. I tried to take the comments that I heard from my fellow board members and incorporated them into our working agreements. And I added the references to policies as a cross-reference, per the request of Director Miles. So this is our first read. If there's something that I missed, got wrong, or forgot, please say so now, and I can add it, change it, or delete it.
I know it was tedious, but I think it was a great suggestion to add the cross-referencing of the policies. So, kudos on that work.
Thank you.
I was going to say that. Thank you for digging through the B-section policies and aligning these to those.
You know, it's never a bad idea to go back and reread your policies, especially in Section B, to find out what it is we're supposed to be doing as a board. I can highly recommend that. It's a fun-filled Tuesday night activity. Okay, well, if I'm hearing no comments, then I will bring this back for a second read at our next board meeting. Thank you, everybody. We'll then move to our first reading of our board committee assignments. And this is not quite so pretty of a document. I struggled a little bit on the technicalities. But what I did was, I removed the curriculum and boundary committees entirely, because those are not board committees, those are superintendent committees. And so the way that will work moving forward is, the superintendent will be making his committees. If there's a committee that you are interested in, contact the superintendent, put your name in the hat, and he will select, based on interest and ability and timing of meetings, who to select for his committees. I changed the name of long-term facilities and bond planning. Since we're not doing those anymore, we have now passed the bond, and so now that will be bond oversight. So Vice Chair Irvin was on that committee. So Vice Chair Urban was on that committee. So then I just changed it over, and I took the same committees we had last year and plugged them into the same people this year. So if you were on a committee and you hated it and you want rid of it, now is the time to say so. If you want to do some horse trading and swap with somebody for a different committee, now is the time to say so. And I made a mistake up at the top, when I put in licensed negotiations as a carryover, that should actually be classified negotiations. And then licensed negotiations will be a separate thing this year, and so that is another item, that if somebody wants to be on licensed negotiations, they should say so now. So we've got begging one spot on the bond oversight committee, who wants to do or is able to do licensed negotiations, because that is a pretty significant commitment of time when we get to that next spring. And then, does anybody want to swap around the committees that they're on?
Oh, look, you're pointing at me. I, I will raise my hand for the bond oversight committee.
Was anybody else dying for that and is now crying inside? All right, then, we'll add you to that. Perfect. Is anybody just itching to take on licensed negotiations? If not, I'm happy to pick that up. I know I have the most free time during the days that...
You can add me to that again, since I've done them all thus far.
Yeah, it would actually be better to have two board members on it, so. Okay, so I think then, everybody has at least something. Some have more, some have less, and it's always each according to their interests and their abilities, and there's no, no judgment, no fault. It's, what do you want to do? Okay, great, I think we have our bonds, our, our school board assignments then. Then we will move on to our final report and discussion item, and that is our bond update, and that is Director, Director Montag and, not Director, Director Kowalski? Okay, Director, sorry, stumbling on that.
Good evening. Happy to be here to present the first of what I presume will be many bond updates for the, for the board to hear. And we're just going to start right off and jump in with Jessica's portion of that to tell you about the bond sale.
Next slide, thank you. So with the successful passage of the measure in May, we began the work to secure the first line of funding. I say that because despite the fact that the bond was approved for $421.3 million, we knew that the structure of the bond would be such that we would need to go to market at least two times in order to maintain that estimated increase in taxes, as well as the district is subject to several arbitrage and IRS statutes related to how quickly it can spend and commit funds. So I just want to thank Sarah Marabzada and Sean Christiansen. As we were working with our bond sell team, we needed to look at construction schedules and project priority, just to ensure that we were borrowing the correct amount. So we completed our bond sell on August 5th, and we closed last Tuesday. We issued $197,120,000 in bonds. And just based off of market conditions, realized an additional $9.3 million in premium. That reflects about 4% of the total issuance. Just for contrast, when we sold bonds in 2019, we sold $90 million in bonds and received $20 million in premium. So just premium is one of those things that fluctuates based off of economic conditions and interest rates offered in the market. I listed the members who were part of the district team. So PFM Financial Advisors is our municipal debt advisor. We have an ongoing relationship with them throughout the year. Our legal counsel was Hawkins, Delafield, and Wood. Special thank you to Sarah Dickey and Carol McCug for your help. We also, of course, applied for the MDAC and OSBG program through the Oregon Treasury, and US Bank will be our paying agent throughout the next 21 years. And finally, we went out to an RFP close, around the time of the bond measure. Our finance committee chair served on that election, selection committee, and we actually opted to go with an underwriter syndicate. So instead of just going with one person who would help us sell bonds, we brought on a total of three parties who would work together to competitively sell our debt. So that included Piper Sandler as lead, B of A Securities, and Metaro Financial. So going back to the left side, total cost of this issuance was approximately $782,000. That means that we have $205 million available for projects for this first series of work. And in about three to four years, depending on how projects are going, we'll look at how to, if we're going to sell the remaining authorization in one or two tranches.
So moving on to what we've been doing, since Jessica's team has been doing a lot of the money stuff, we don't get involved in that. We spend it, we don't, we don't get it. Going off of the things that we learned from the last bond and what worked well, we once again established a, a bond leadership team internally. Currently, we have nine folks on that, on that team that meet weekly to go over all of the projects that we're working on, all of the different things, get input from the various team members on that, to make sure that we're moving in the, in the right direction and we're all moving forward as one. Next slide, please. So again, with the oversight, the oversight committee, that was a really big thing for the last bond, for to have the, the bond oversight committee. That's been a, a thing that has been brought up multiple times during the course of the last bond and asked about here as we've gone forward with this one. So we are in the process right now. Alex and his team are spearheading, putting that team together, so that we can have that together and get those community members that will be helping us steer the ship the right way and get those, the input that we got from, from the community last, last year that was, our last bond, that was extremely helpful. So helpful, in fact, that we still are currently utilizing some of the previous bond oversight committee members to help us do scoring on, on things, like we had two of them help us score the architect proposals, just because we, we really value that input from those folks. Next slide. So as you know, we brought forth the contract for brick architecture for approval to the board. We have now got them on board as our design consultant for the, for five projects, the five Keystone projects, as I call them. And they're in the early stages of design and engagement process, figuring out what, what we're going to do and how we're going to do it, because some of the things are a little bit hard to put together and hard to define a scope on. So they're currently working through that. For our construction management, we have an RFP that hit the street last week. So we have a, we'll see tomorrow what kind of interest we get in that, as we have a pre-proposal mandatory meeting for those firms to come and listen to, listen to our spiel before they put together their proposals for us. Initial read on that is, we're going to have a lot of folks that are interested in that, based on people that have been, firms that have been reaching out to us on that. Next slide. So given that we passed the bond in May, didn't really know officially until a little bit later, a few weeks later, that gives a, gave us a pretty condensed timeline to do anything during the summer of '25, but we were able to pull off a few projects. We replaced carpet at CFT and Metzger in the classrooms that has needed it for a while. We replaced 89 failing windows, failed windows at Tuolotin Elementary School. And we attempted to do a portion of a roof at Tuolotin Elementary, with the rest of it happening next year. However, the material supply couldn't make it, so we will have to do all of the roof next year at Tuolotin Elementary School. Next slide. So as I mentioned, Brick Architecture is in the process of starting design on Fowler Middle School. They are rolling up to get their engagement process happening that, that will roll out in September to start engaging community, staff, students, administrators, all the folks that really, all of our stakeholders that are going to be involved in, in that process and that are going to be using the school once it's done. Site survey, land use, and geotech contracts and reports are in process to, to get all of that figured out as a part of how can we design things. For example, we need to know what our soils are before we can really determine what the school is, where the school may be sited, and, and all of the design parameters around that. Next slide. The four elementary schools were planning currently to do those in two separate cohorts. They will be both, all be done during occupied or occupied construction, so shuffling students around will require a little bit of logistical ingenuity, I would say, to, to make that happen. But we're committed to doing that, making, making sure that's right. Durham and Bridgeport are, because of their populations, current enrollment, we will have to bring portables on site to do that. Byram and Mary Woodward, Mary Woodward have portables currently on site that we will be able to utilize in order to do that with their enrollment. We don't believe we will have to bring any additional portables on site for those two schools. And engagement, as I said, was, was stakeholders will commence this fall. We've had initial meetings with principals before school was out. We met with those folks, asked, you know, start looking at this, so we can really get into the nuts and bolts when we get an architect on board. And we have that now, so we'll be kicking that off here shortly. Next slide. Next summer, we're scheduled to do Deer Creek Security upgrades and infrastructure project. That'll be installing doors on all of the classrooms. As, as you know, those are, it's an open, open concept design, so there is no way to secure door or individual classrooms. We'll be rectifying that in this project, as well as installing new boilers. Fire alarm, AHJ, which is the authority having jurisdiction around the grease trap in the kitchen, to bring it up to code compliance. And then working on accessibility and upgrades to the lower playground area as a part of that project. Next slide. We'll also be working on restrooms, exterior restrooms for the sporting complexes at both high schools, Tigerhead High and Tuolotin High. And we're currently working for that for construction as well in '26. And Brick is working through those. We've talked to administration staff and have an idea where they want to put the, where they want to put the facilities, and we're working through that. So that'll, that'll be coming up as well next summer. Next slide. Elementary playgrounds is another big topic. We heard loud and clear from the community that that was a thing as we were going through the bottom ranch facility plan and the, and the bond planning process. So we're moving that to get together and figure out what our, what our design is going to be, and engaging everybody from, from administrators to PSOs, to folks who want to have input on that. We have a lot of different sites, as you know, different constraints at different sites, large sizes, small sizes of existing. So we're trying to work through those processes to make sure that we're putting equitable playgrounds together for those students that, that will be using them in the future. Next slide. And then some others, 2026 projects, a little smaller projects. This is just kind of a snapshot of a few. We have a lot of small projects in this bond identified. If you remember from the, from the charts that we brought to you, there was, there's the five big ones, but then there's a whole bunch of little ones. So these are some of the, the bigger, more impactful ones that we have scheduled for summer of 2026. Replacing the bleachers at Tuolotin High, that's a, will improve ADA accessibility. We'll, we're going to be doing HVAC replacements at the four newer, older elementary schools, which are CFT, Metzger, Tuolotin Elementary, and Alberta Rider. And then we have a couple of units at Tigerhead High that still need to be replaced. We're doing some of them this summer, but there's still a couple more. That's to get rid of the old R22 refrigerant units that have been unable to be serviced with R22 for quite a while. And replace field lighting at Tigerhead High Soccer Field. We have that set up to do next summer. As one of the things, we have also had field lighting at Tuolotin High Multipurpose Field. One thing we did not get on this slide is Tuolotte Middle School. We didn't put it on there because we didn't at the time know what the land use decision from the city was going to be. We got that, I believe on Friday, Thursday or Friday of last week, that we are, we did receive approval from the city to install lights at Tuolotte Middle School. So we'll be moving forward with having a neighborhood meeting around that to, to get that project moving as well. That will likely happen before summer of 2026. We'll go probably late fall or early spring of, of this coming year. Next slide. I'm going to turn this one over to Alex.
Thank you. Well, as you've heard me say before, we have a duty to keep the public well-informed about how bond proceeds are being spent. Here are a couple of examples from social media. You'll see social media is one of our main areas where we're communicating with our community. We also have our newsletters. We're updating the website constantly. You'll be seeing an article in the Valley Times here in the next two, three days, I believe, with the bond update, and possibly a little bit later in Tigerhead life, Tuolotin life. And then, as, as Kevin mentioned, we're working on putting the bond oversight committee together, but we're very committed to keeping people informed about how the bond proceeds are being spent responsibly.
And last slide. So this is some anticipated board items that we'll be bringing to you in September. Again, we'll note, we did not put in the Tuolotte Middle School approval, because we didn't know at the time, but that one will be coming to you in September for approval for those lights. And then, and land use contract that we're currently getting proposals for to, for the bond, to do all of our land use throughout the bond. Construction management firms, as I mentioned, we are currently in an RFP process that just opened last week. And we are looking to have that to the board in October, to have that selection done. And then, as I mentioned, first out of the box, this will be a, a monthly thing with the, the updates, so we can keep you updated on all the great progress we're making. Any questions?
I don't have any questions yet, but I love these updates, and I appreciate sort of for both our understanding and the, the public, just sort of seeing how things were allowed, that it's not, although we'd love this to be the case, it's not like we have the bond money and now we have a new school. And so really understanding that process and the steps involved and the, the people involved, and that there are ways for the bigger community to become involved in part of that process, I think is a great one, too. So I really appreciate these updates and the sort of site-specific information that you're giving. I think that's really helpful. So, and I know that takes a lot of work, so thank you.
I was actually going to say, I'm so impressed with how much we've already been able to do with this bond. We only just sold it. By the time the one-year anniversary of the vote happens, we will have new carpet, we will have some new HVACs. Those are real things that make a real difference in buildings for kids and for staff. And to be able to do that so quickly, it fills me with joy, because I know it's going to make a big impact. And yeah, the, the timeline for building a building is always, there's such a long lead-up as we're doing all of the planning, but that design phase is so important to get it all right, so that when it goes up, it's, it's as wonderful as we had hoped it would be. So I'm really excited by the progress already. Thank you for all of your hard work on this, and I really look forward to the updates. Director Weston, did you have anything?
No, thank you.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I should say, thank you voters for passing the bond. I will keep saying that over and over again, like a broken record, because it's such an amazing thing to have. Okay, because our voters passed the bond, we now have, in our action items, we have a supplemental budget. a supplemental budget that we need to approve. Director C.
Yes, so just referring to the board packet, starting on around page 64. When we had our annual budget hearing in June, I noted that with the May election, local budget law allows districts to consider supplemental budgets when more information is known specifically about the amount of debt being sold and the repayment schedules. So we will have three specific board action items all related to the bond. So the first resolution, 252603, this is the first supplemental budget, and we do these according to funds. So specifically, the resolution presented to the board shows the General Obligation Debt Service Fund being adjusted by approximately $17.7 million. So this will reflect anticipated tax receipts and then the related debt service on the 2025 bonds. Any questions?
I move to approve Resolution 2526-03, supplemental budget number one, dash two five, dash two six, General Obligation Debt Service Fund as presented.
Second. I think she squeaked you out there. It's been moved by Director Heim, and seconded by Director Miles, that we approve Resolution 2526-03 as presented. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
All right, our next item is Resolution 252604. This is our second supplemental budget for the 2526 year, and this is specifically related to the Capital Projects Fund. This supplemental budget recognizes revenue of $206,973,186. This is comprised of the long-term debt financing proceeds I spoke about during the bond update, as well as anticipated potential interest earnings. And then, following historical precedence, we appropriate the entire amount to be related to capital project improvements. Yep, that's the second supplemental budget.
I move to approve Resolution 2526-04, supplemental budget number two, dash 25, dash 26, Capital Projects Fund as presented.
Second.
Been moved by Director, by Director Irvin, seconded by Director Heim, that we approve Resolution 2526-04 as presented. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, move to a corral vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
All right, and finally, Resolution 252605. This is categorizing and imposing additional taxes for the 2526 budget. This specifically modifies and levies additional taxes, which gives directions to the both counties assessors to calculate general obligation bonded debt. So specifically, we're asking the board to impose an additional $18,188,900 in taxes. The total imposed bond amount will total $40,746,700. And the tax is categorized upon the assessed value for taxable property without any limit. That just like points the Constitution and how general obligation bonds don't have a cap.
I move to approve Resolution 2526-05, imposing and categorizing additional taxes for the 202526 budget as presented.
Second. Been moved by Director Heim, and seconded by Director Miles, that we approve Resolution 2526-05 as presented. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We will now move to our 202526 meal prices. Director Irwin.
Good evening. For the 2526 meal prices, you might think you already approved this. Well, you did. It was, it was approved during the fee schedule back in June. But what was important is we want to get it kind of back on schedule of when we normally approve the meal prices. Also, in the explanation, it talks a little bit more of why we want to have these prices for our second meals. Let me be clear, second meals, not first meals, because they're all free. But if you look at this, the second paragraph of the explanation that in Oregon now, we're getting 100% reimbursement, where where last year it was 90% reimbursement. So that's one change in in the explanation that I wanted to highlight. Any questions?
I move to approve the meal and milk prices for the 202526 school year as presented.
Second. It's been moved by Director Heim, and seconded by Director West, that we approve the milk, meal and milk prices for the 202526 school year as presented. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We then move on to our food service contract.
Welcome again. We have four contracts that are presented to you tonight. Two of them are new. Those are the first two that you see on the explanation there. The first one is for bakery goods through Goodie Man Distribution for just a little over $89,000. The reason why we're, want to go with this one and the next one as well is that there's a consortium that we get better pricing with multiple schools, districts, and so you can see that. The second one is for dairy with Spring Valley for $193,000. That seems like a lot, but we're feeding a lot of kids. And then the next two are just rollover contracts, ones that we usually have every year with the same vendor. And so those are the other two, ones through OCNC, which is also a consortium with many, many school districts around the state of Oregon and now Idaho. And then the last one is, sorry, for produce. And so there's a few school districts you can see listed there as well, and that's close to $270,000.
And is Caruso part of a consortium buy as well?
Is who, sorry?
Is our produce supplier part of a consortium?
Yeah, there's a, it's not through OCNC, but you can see a list of school districts. There are McMinnville, Woodburn, Cascade, Tiger, Talton, North Sandia, North Marion, and Jurvis, school districts.
Thank you. Are there any further questions?
I move to approve extensions for Cisco Portland and Caruso Produce contracts as presented. I move to accept and award Spring Valley Dairy and Goodie Man Distribution as presented.
Second. It's been moved by Director Heim, and seconded by Director Miles, that we approve extensions for Cisco Portland and Caruso Produce, Produce contracts as presented, and to accept and award Spring Valley Dairy and Goodie Man Distributing as presented. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll take a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you so very much. Moving now to item F on our dance card. This is the second reading of our board policies. HR Director Len Reed, come on down again. We're getting your steps in for you today. We're like doing the mind meld here.
All right, so hello again. This time around, I am bringing forth the board policy around personal electronic devices to give you an opportunity to be able to review the revised policy without all the strikeouts and additions in it, and hold any discussion prior to approval and implementation, and ask any questions.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask, given that the school year is about to start and we might have things that we did not think of, but that we might consider after written exemptions come in, it sounds like we'll be looking at this a little bit more and possibly have any of those, that additional information soon. Like, are we going to be talking about some of the, any, anything else that comes up based on exemptions?
Director Weston, so can I ask a clarifying question? Is your, is your question asking if there'll be modifications to practice in schools based on learning more about the exemptions and other non-anticipated complications that might come in with the policy? Is that your question?
Yes, I mean, not definitely, but just potentially. I just, I guess I'm thinking about what we might not know, given this is new, just the opportunity to look at it again and consider any, anything that comes up.
So my best understanding of the situation with the, with JFCEB at this point is that it's pretty much locked in. ODE and OSBA have advised that that this is the the best version of the policy we could have. So I am not anticipating additional changes to it from here on. I mean, obviously, the future, who knows what it holds, but at this point, this is the policy that I believe the board should adopt, so that we have a solid policy in place for the start of the school year, that then administration can work their magic with in their regulations, administrative rules going forward.
If, if there's material changes to state guidance on the use of PEDs, then we will bring that back to board leadership for consideration on if it's a, a district policy that needs attention, or if it's a district practice that needs attention. If it's a district practice, what we'll do is we'll manage that internally and bring it back to the board and to the general public for updates.
Thank you. I really appreciate this work, and I'm excited about this policy. I just feel that it's difficult to anticipate everything, so I'm glad to hear folks are still kind of looking at it and being thoughtful about the rollout, and thanks for all the ongoing work with both the policy and any associated ARs.
Yeah, there's a lot of unknowns, but we've, have full confidence in the, the group of leaders that attended to this, including our board leadership, and, and I think we have a, a solid foundation to work from.
Thank you for that question. Any other questions?
Yes, so if we're thinking bell-to-bell, right, then, and it says that we will allow them to use it on the bus, does that include, like, field trips that are during school days?
No, it does not.
No, what?
Because that's during instructional time.
But they're on a field trip, on a bus?
But it's during instructional time. The executive order was very clear that it was... But it's under the guidance of school administration, other than a bus driver. So...
So, do we need to call that out, or no? Or was that beyond the AR, or no?
We did in the AR, not in the AR, excuse me, in the Student Rights and Responsibility Handbook, that is spelled out, but that is not spelled out as such in the policy. The policy does give the rule about, where is it? Policy excludes time when students are not on school grounds and are not under the supervision of school personnel, other than a school bus driver. And that is just a complicated way of saying, if it's just the, the driver, then the student can use the cell phone if it's outside of the bell-to-bell time. But if it's within the bell-to-bell time, and it's a teacher on the bus because it's a field trip, then the cell phone still needs to be off.
Cool. Thanks for communicating that last part. There's greater, there's greater capacity for enforcing that aspect of the policy. And then also, we're trying to operate within the ARs as articulated in that part where it says within instruction time. This makes it challenging, even though it's off school grounds.
Any other questions?
No, then I motion to approve board policy JFCEB dash personal electronic devices.
Second. Been moved by Director Heim, and seconded by Director Weston, that we approve board policy JFCEB personal electronic devices as proposed. Is there any further discussion? Hearing?
Curious if our student, student representatives have anything they'd like to, to share, communicate.
Thank you for reminding me.
It's, it's interesting. I'll put it that way. I know, like, as a student of applications, we're trying to figure out, like, how do we give out surveys? Because, like, we can't use QR codes in, like, hallways and stuff like that. It's interesting to see how the school's culture is going to shift over the next year, because, like, you can't have your cell phones out during class and curating, you can't have them out during lunch. So it's like, what are students going to do? Is kind of what I'm curious about. I know that, like, I, like, reposted what the governor made, like, the executive order about, and students were really pissed off about it, which is understandable. And also, they are a disrupt, like, a disruption to the learning environment. I just wish that students were able to, be able to use their cellular devices more so as a learning tool, and so something that, like, they're destined to, if that makes sense.
And I'm hopeful that students will still be able to use their cell phones as learning tools, because when it's in support of curriculum, that is permissible. But, yeah, it, I, I agree that the degree of autonomy that's been taken away from students, and that ability to learn self-regulation being taken away is a little on the frustrating side.
I don't really have anything to say. Moss said pretty much everything I was going to try to say, so.
Okay, I'm just, yeah, so we've got a first and a second. I'm just going to review the motion before the board is to approve policy JFCEB personal electronic devices. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you so much. And with that, we are on to our final action item. Thank you, Director Reed. A few more steps for you this evening. Our last action item of the evening is our Student Rights and Responsibilities Handbook Updates Approval, and that is Director Pulaski. And Special Agent Nessie.
Hello again, yes, special guest Eric Nessie. Thanks, Eric. So this is second reading about the Student Rights and Responsibilities Handbook. We brought it to you at your last meeting. One of the main changes here, as you know, involves our personal electronic device policy. The PD, I want to note that the PDF that we included here does have the updated wording around the PED policy, but our eagle-eyed chair noticed that we, we didn't have the discipline framework included at that time. We've included it since then, so it will be ready to go. It's actually in, in place right now. So with that, we're glad to answer any questions that you have.
So, board members, if you're scrolling through, it's on page 24 and 25, section 17 of the Student Rights and Responsibilities Handbook is the place. We've brought this forward for a, a second read in live time rather than in consent agenda, just because we figured there would be questions. But then y'all jumped the gun and started talking about them during the policy discussions, so maybe we don't have to discuss it anymore. But I want to make sure that everybody's concerns are addressed, and also the students. Director Weston.
Thank you. I had a little bit of a different question about the heading Dating Violence, because the way I see the policy, it looks like if there's some kind of sexual assault within the context of a dating relationship, it seems to be covered by the policy. But if it's not within a dating relationship, I'm not sure where that's getting covered.
We would still attend to that as a, a serious behavior violation, if there is any. So you're asking about sexual assault? If it's not related to dating, is that, is that the question? I'm just making sure I'm tracking your question, Director Weston.
Yes, it looks like there's some kind of understanding in our policy that implies that that only can happen in a dating context. I feel like the heading is maybe... I feel like the heading is maybe, could use an update.
Well, we'll take a look at that, but if there's ever a sexual assault, we have SROs involved, law and court is involved. There's serious school penalties up to expulsion and we take that very seriously. And so I'm sorry that that's not clearly articulated in the handbook. We'll take a double look. Double, we'll look at that again to make sure it's all encompassing, but that's something that we would take very seriously.
Thank you. And I, I did feel that that's something our district would take seriously. I think maybe it's just, maybe a holdover in the language that just isn't quite updated. So thank you for taking a look.
Sure. And, and also I, I don't think that a student, if they were to engage in that type of behavior, could point to the handbook and say, I didn't have my due process. That's something that's universally known is unacceptable.
And I just wanted to ask a clarifying question. You said something about it was in the policy, but you, was that just a misstatement you meant in the student handbook? Or did you mean in the actual policy, JFCF and JFCP, the ones that talk about bullying and harassment? Or are you talking about something else?
I'm sorry, Chair Zerchmid. I am talking about the handbook. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Superintendent, do you have something to add?
Yeah, I was just confirming with my team and this is actually covered under Title IX. So I think bases are all covered in the handbook as well.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that the board approve the 2025-26 Student Rights and Responsibilities Handbook, subject to wording changes aligned with new personal electronic devices policy.
Second.
It's been moved by Vice Chair Irvin, seconded by Director Heim, that we approve the 2526 Student Rights and Responsibilities Handbook, subject to wording changes aligned with new personal electronic devices policy. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you so much. And with that, we are ready for adjournment at 7:42 PM. Thank you all so very much. Have a good evening.